It stands.
One nation, under God, in the best school with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Weathersfield Select Board meeting. Today is October the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We do not have the video camera on here in the, in the, in the meeting room at Martin Memorial Hall, so we cannot see you tonight online. If you have any questions, direct them through Olivia. She can see you on her computer and she will let us know. The other option is to come on down to the meeting in person. But I think we can probably communicate. Now, can somebody please let Olivia know that you can at least hear us? Who's on, Olivia?
Clairemont iPhone, can I get your name for the minutes? They're muted right now.
I think Clairemont iPhone is sat up.
Hmm, maybe. I don't know.
Okay. Nobody's responding?
No, that's the only person that would be on.
Okay, so, alright, so we won't worry about that. Agenda review at this point, but if anybody comes in, let us know, please. Agenda review, everybody okay with the agenda? I will, item number six will be moved to a future agenda item. John is unable to make it this evening. So we'll take that up at a later date. Anything anybody would like to see arranged on the, Dave?
Well, not on this, but when it says other business, can we just briefly take up the Ascutney Basin Bridge?
You want to do that there or? Brendan, is that something that's under, would be in your town manager report? Or is there anywhere else that that's already within this? I don't think it is.
It's not my town manager report today, but I can give an update.
You can?
Yes.
And so that, that is fine with me?
So we'll do that under the town manager update?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Brendan. You too, Dave. Okay. Comments from select board, town manager, citizens, topics not on the agenda. And you are?
Rhonda Fairbrother.
Rhonda Fairbrother. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I had concern, a couple of weeks ago, I was on Roberts Road approaching Melody Lane, which is a very blind intersection. Even sitting up in the toolbox, I can't see people coming down. They had a Jeep and an equipment trailer parked on the side of the road. I was driving around them. I almost got hit by somebody coming off Melody Lane. I know there is a lot more construction up there right now. So in talking with Chief Daniels, I was told that he can't make people move off the side of the road. And if I was hit since I was in their travel lane, I'm at fault. So my, I'm kind of concerned about this because I've also driven up Melody Lane. I'll let Courtney's dog out when she was gone once again and barely squeezed through four cars parked on Melody Lane with my Mini Cooper. Once again, what if there's a fire? What if somebody needs an ambulance? Chief Daniel, I mean, Chief Falding told me they have no right to move a car. So a house burns down, somebody dies. I'm looking for a few things. One, a stop sign at the end of Melody Lane. And it has to be there because that's the blind spot. It's the intersection. You live on a dead end road and Melody Lane is a dead end road off a dead end road. Secondly, I was wondering if we could have some no parking signs in the area? Because when people are, where that, where people were parked is right in where that line intersection is, and it's dangerous. I don't, I don't want to see anybody hurt. What else? I was just kind of, and like a lower speed limit if possible. We are looking at a lot of construction up there. And I understand there was a lot of lots sold and I have no problem with that. But I was headed to work one afternoon. Carrel concrete was cooking up through and almost hit me in the front end and I was stopped and then ditched. There's no way you can pass it because we're two big vehicles. It's a narrow road in some areas like from where Betty broke shoes to live up to Melody Lane. Very narrow there. There's just been a lot of dump trucks, construction, electrical, plumbing. And I understand that's going to happen, but in the last two years, the traffic on that road's more than doubled. We're dead end. There is no other alternative for us to go.
Yeah, it ends at Court, it ends at Courtney's.
Well, yeah, and I live up on Roberts Road past Melody Lane. But I mean, I've been back.
Right, up to the, off to the right, that way.
If you drive past Melody Lane, on the next driveway after. And we, I mean, we have houses going up all around us and that's not my issue. My issue is, we need to do something to make it safer. We have people that used to walk their dogs every day and no longer walking their dogs.
The first thing I'll, I'll address is the stop sign, speed limit signs, parking signs. All of those are considered traffic control and come under federal law. And, and all of that stuff requires a traffic study, Brendan.
There used to be a stop sign there when I was growing up. There used to be a stop sign there.
Well, then they're.
Knocked over and never replaced.
Okay, well, then that might be an easy fix for that, to, to restore whatever that speed limit was, whether, but that wouldn't reduce it. And I'm going to guess that that's probably thirty-five?
Thirty.
It was thirty?
Bowen's was twenty-five and that's twice as wide as our limit.
Okay, so we need to look into that, Brendan.
Okay.
Whether or not we can.
And I know the traffic has died down some because winter is coming.
Can, can you give me an idea how long ago that sign went down? That speed limit sign?
I was probably.
Ten years?
Yeah, probably, yeah. And we've been, we, there used to be a little man on the top of the, of the stop sign that said stop too. It was like a little cop on the top of the sign. So it's just like that childhood memory where I can't get it out of my head.
And that was the speed limit sign?
No, it was on the stop sign. So people would notice the stop sign was there.
And the stop sign is gone?
The stop sign's gone and so.
What about the speed, and so is the speed limit sign?
No, speed limit sign is there. Speed limit sign, do you say?
One at a time? I mean, you're in Stera.
There's a speed limit for thirty, but it should be twenty-five. Because people are doing the five miles over, so they're still doing.
Alright, so there is a speed limit sign there?
Yes.
Okay. Again, to change it, you got to do a traffic study. But the, but the stop sign is what used to be there and that's, that's, that's missing. So we can go back and we can maybe get that back up. Dave, you got anything on this?
Yeah, does, does Ray know about this, Brendan?
I don't believe he does. I'm going to catch up with him and do an evaluation of the road.
Yeah, I think we should sort this out. So my guess is, you know, there's a lot of dirt roads in Weathersfield that are thirty. That's not really, I don't think that's going anywhere. Stop sign, if that's a replaceable thing, then that's an easy fix. But I'm more concerned with, I do not think that contractors, despite, and Bill's not here, so I can't figure out what he said or what he didn't say. I do not think the contractors have a right to block the traveled portions of the road either way.
It's not the contractors, it's the residents. Because after I complained and Bill talked to them, they left the cars parked in the road for two more days. So I refused to let the dog off the bus until his vehicle, so I could proceed safely.
I just, I don't, I don't think that people have a right to block being the travel portion of the road. I don't know what our policy says or doesn't say, the road policies.
I know, I know that coming up here pretty quick, there's going to be no parking because you hit the winter months and that you can't park on the traveling portion of the road.
Well, they did it last winter. They come up Melody Lane, they're there now. They're the ones that have the trailer and called the police about three times. He has a trash company. He has his trailer on the back of the truck. He has trucks there and about three more of their vehicles are there. I've had to wait for him to get out from underneath the car because he was fixing it one time. He's fixed cars twice in the middle of the road. And the other day, his wife backed an excavator out into the road as me and my children were walking down the hill. So they're also using their general road to use as a turnaround when they're using their excavator. Which when my children are walking down on the bus, it's kind of safety conscious.
I, I tend to agree with you, Dave. We can hold Ray and get Ray and Brendan looking into this.
To look at the road, whatever.
Yeah.
I still, I still am thinking, just as a general concept, I'm, I'm setting aside this particular road. I mean, I don't have any right to block the two-lane traffic pattern of Plains Road either. So I, so I think.
State would probably have an issue with me. In fact, they had an issue with me plowing without a light on my truck at the end of mine. I'm, I'm Hawksmount Motorcycles on one oh six. And I was plowing the end of my driveway and they, the statey stopped, said, you got a light.
Yeah, but that's going through State Road too.
Yeah.
I think this is purely a town issue.
Yeah, it is.
So.
I just, I mean, we just have so much more building going on. If with two sites it's this bad, what happens when there's six? And, I mean.
Well, that's all been permitted through the planning board, through the subdivision process and the road. I mean, I, so I haven't been up there, I haven't looked, but I'm pretty confident that, that we'll be able to sort out the traveled portion of the road and that nobody can be in one side, therefore not letting traffic pass. I think that's a destruction. So.
But Bill said he can't force them to move?
Well, we'll figure that out.
They had their truck parked there the other day and when she backed out the excavator, one of my neighbors up here, he was trying to come and they had to wait for her move the excavators so they could come down there, travel the portion of the road because they have the entire road blocked off between the excavator and their truck.
Okay.
I also have a, oh, it happened.
Okay, so. For, for now, Brendan's going to be on vacation for a week, starting tomorrow. So, other than us, one of us talk, I, I can get ahold of Ray if you want or you can get ahold of him for tonight or tomorrow, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, just follow my ride home tonight, my ride.
Yeah, I just don't want you, you know, I want you to take your vacation.
I'm just concerned, I know our guys do a great job on the road, but there are times where you stand, the sun shines on the road, you get that glaze of ice over it. I have to turn around at Melody Lane. It's been a dangerous intersection, but the more traffic you put there, the more dangerous it becomes. And then park cars within that intersection or close to it, it becomes severely dangerous.
Okay.
So kind of graders are rolling around colors and operating that portion of the road. You know, I follow Melody Lane.
I'm not playing nothing.
Okay. Alright, we will look into it. We'll start working on this and it, it's going to probably take a bit to get this all sorted out. Especially with Brendan taking off for a week, but we'll, I'll rely on Ray. And I, I would give it at least a week until Brendan gets back and then you touch base with him on, on, keep up, you communicate through him on what's going on. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We're sorry for the trouble that's going on up there.
Can I have your, if you read any telephone number or email address, I can communicate with you?
Thank you, Rhonda. Review minutes of previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of ten oh two, two thousand and twenty-three, with corrections if needed?
Still move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion by Dave, second by Kelly. Any discussion on the minutes?
At, at the very end, we had a discussion about, it, it was into the warrants about.
A library's money.
Yeah, where was that?
Yeah.
I didn't find it.
I saw that too.
Was it not included in the minutes?
I didn't know that it was felt necessary.
Did we motion to strike?
Yes, to take it out.
To strike the topic because the warrant was inadvertently presented and I think we motioned and seconded to.
If you read number sixteen, so if you follow where it says approve the warrants and then you get down on the next page, just before seventeen, there was a motion to remove the funding from the warrant. But, no, I, I don't think that anybody has the right to, to take about what words it was said. But clearly for me, a correction to these minutes would, would also include some of the discussion that was happened, that happened at that time. So maybe you need time to retrieve what's on the tape or whatever to go over it and to amend these minutes or correct them and then present before we accept them. Maybe that's the right thing to do because I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. I don't want to do anything that is mistaken about it or, it seemed like there was quite a lot of.
Well, let, let's briefly try to recap a bit of, of what the situation was at least. And that is that a mistake was made in the office and this, these totals ended up on our warrants and they shouldn't have been there. And that's really about all we need for information.
It was, it was fundraising that brought to us, right? And then we wondered out loud whether or not we had any jurisdiction over fundraising monies.
Right.
I remember you, you telling us that, that does go through the general fund, the dispersments. Maybe you found some new news out that, that it doesn't, I don't know. I don't know.
So yeah, the library expenses and revenues go through the general fund and everything is accounted for through that fund. And there's another fund for fundraising.
But the question would be whether, who has authority to disperse those funds? The library board of trustees or we have to send, sign it through the warrant here?
Library board of trustees on those.
On the fundraising monies?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so the conversation was correct about that, right?
Yes, the conversation was correct and what we did was correct.
Okay. So my, without seeing what was, what was on the tape or, like, I haven't had a chance to go over it, I, I think the discussion went further than just fundraising.
Well, it, it, it did, but the, the requirement for minutes is a record of the action that the board takes. I don't know that we need a full account of that discussion in the minutes. And that's why I went to the, what, what was the situation that we were dealing with? And that was a mistake that was made that put this number on our warrants that shouldn't have been there. So really, we only, if, if we need any kind of discussion about it in the minutes so that it's clear why that was taken out of there, it would be, I think, just to address that. I, I don't, it, it, does that work for you, Dave?
Not really, because the minutes are a reflection of actually what happened during the meetings, whatever meeting it was. And, and it doesn't matter about whether it's this specific topic or whether it's another topic. So the minutes are statements that are made by individuals, including me, during the meeting about the topic of which is for discussion. So I think a lot of clarification came out of those, that conversation in the library.
I see what you mean, there's, yeah.
For us. So, you know, the, the discussion was in that, at that time about who had authority to do what. And so I, I learned a little bit more after that in a conversation with Brendan about the, the Hartford decision that was a, I believe, what was it? Hartford, Vermont, actually, that was in court with their board of trustees about how they govern and expend funds. Now, Brendan read to me the very first, which I, which I still hold out a lot of hope to work with the library trustees. But the first paragraph of that decision says that the Supreme Court ruled in the state, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but I think I captured what the, what, what the ruling was. That that statement said that the, that the Select Board or the governing body of Hartford needed to work with the, the library trustees. So that's, if that's the benchmark we're using, I hope that that happens here.
Oh, I agree.
But it seems a little absent.
Oh, I, yeah, I see what you mean there too.
So anyway, I, I don't want to drag this out, but I'm just saying that I.
So, so you're, you, you have something specific you want to see. Nikki, can you work with Dave on that to get that where?
Sure. I just interpreted it as it was a mistake in the warrants.
You're right.
So I, I guess I could capture why. But is there something you want me to add to that?
No, you can't add anything. You have to recapture whatever the.
I think she means add to what she did.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that because I don't want to get it wrong and I don't want to be right. I just want it to be a, what the minutes were at the time.
Can I call it?
Yeah, sure.
Can you watch the sapphic tape and capture what was going on from there?
Yeah, I, I don't think it needs to be verbatim, but it needs to capture, I think what Dave is talking about. There were, there were some things that were said about who has what control and stuff.
Yes.
And, and I do think we want to capture some of that. So there's an understanding.
So who has control in like the procedural aspect of it? Because I just thought it was like a procedural discussion.
Even, even expending funds and whose job it is to do what. I mean, it.
Yeah.
I just want to put it to rest for once and for all so that I know what's going on. The library knows what's going on. And if everybody wants to go back to that Supreme Court decision, then they need to read it in its entirety and not cherry pick.
Oh, I know.
A sentence.
Somebody's discussed it on that.
Yeah, we could do that too. Because part of it comes, part of that discussion in those minutes had to do with the expansion.
Yeah. I, I know, I know where you're going, I know what you're talking about.
I'd just like to know. I don't, you know me, I'd rather not have surprises.
Well, how many times have we gone back to the minutes looking for something?
That's right.
And then we say, oops?
I'll give you another example and this has nothing to do with these particular minutes, so maybe it's out of place to discuss it. But I attended the planning board meeting a month ago and it says that I was present, but I didn't make any comments. Now, I went on quite a lengthy description about farms and things and about what tried a direction the planning board were to take.
Yeah, I led you into the discussion. I was there.
So that's a whole nother set.
Yeah, okay.
So, so what should we do with these? Because I made the motion to put it to accept, accept them tonight. Do you want to just defer it till the next meeting?
That's, I'm fine with that. So, so we will hold these minutes for the next agenda.
Do you need the motion to table? Because there's a motion on the floor, should take action on the motion. I'll withdraw the motion.
That would be even better at this point, just withdraw the motion and withdraw the second. Okay. So the motion is withdrawn, the second was, is withdrawn and we'll just continue these to the next meeting. As I stated earlier, Mr. Arison will not be present tonight. So we go to number seven, healthcare analysis. Have we picked up any visitors online?
No.
Emery, you got here late, but we don't have our, nice to see you. We don't have our video tonight. It's, something's broken, so that's why that's off. Okay.
All right.
Yes, yes, Brendan, you're up.
So a cost benefit analysis was completed for two thousand and twenty-four healthcare. Moving forward with MVP in two thousand and twenty-four would result in a twenty-six thousand dollar increase in healthcare expenses for the town and an average increase of three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents annually for employees. Moving forward, comparable Blue Cross Blue Shield plan is ten thousand, five hundred dollars less than MVP. And the average annual increase for employees is a hundred and nineteen dollars less annually than MVP. The deductible is also lower this year on the Blue Cross Blue Shield, leading to lower contributions for employees in the down. This healthcare recommendation also adjusts the HSAs for single employee plus HSAs, making them proportional by adding a percentage factor, which is the same ratio used for employer-employee shares of healthcare insurance costs on that percentage listing. This study has been circulated to all employees. I'm not looking for a vote tonight, I'm just looking for some feedback. Also give the board some time to read the entire study. I know it's a little long. I was, was trying to get the full analysis completed, comparisons between plans.
So have you heard from any of the employees? Have they seen this yet?
Yeah, I've had some feedback. I haven't received any negative feedback.
Okay, Dave?
Two questions. Where does either picture fit in the already adopted two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
I think, I think what he's referring to is the budget for healthcare is going to change on January first.
Correct.
And I think, what, what you look at it, is that, am I correct?
Yeah, so we already passed the budget and the voters approved it in March for a twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So where does either plan fit into the monetary line item for the budget for total healthcare, given the fact that we're halfway through, or we will be halfway through, a financial year and, and a new year to start with healthcare?
Did we not include a chance of a, of a increase?
We never, we never have. I talked to him about that.
Oh.
So, yeah, it does run, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I know it's obviously going to be different depending on if we go with MVP or Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's not as cut and dry as saying the twenty-six thousand, dividing it by two and adding that in the six month, this year.
It's not?
No.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, if you say it would be thirteen thousand, it would be reasonable. So I'd have to look into that and I'll be prepared to give a number on the next meeting on that.
And number two?
I would like the board to consider if we're, you know, Blue Cross is a very well-known insurer carrier in the state. I mean, nationwide for that matter. School has Blue Cross. But I, I think we owe it to ourselves and the employees to, that if we do move to Blue Cross, that we consider it not to be just a one-year event, that we may say to ourselves, listen, because of the language that's in the plans, and they do move, because MVP moved their language inside the plans the last few years, which leads to issues with money, that when we navigate our way through a new carrier, we go back to, we used to have Blue Cross before we went to MVP, we should consider two to three years maybe of just committing to say, look, we're not going to move healthcare carriers every single year. There are only two to my knowledge in Vermont anyway. It's either MVP or Blue Cross. So I think that's what we should think about in fairness, to, to work through a different carrier and a different plan, different words with employees. I don't know what the board feels about that, but I, I feel kind of cheap to say, well, we'll, we'll attack something else next year, we might go back, we don't know. That's all.
What if, what if MVP came back next year and it was a twenty-six thousand dollar savings?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, I, I think that it comes down to what these insurance companies determine to offer. When I spoke to you, I, I, because I remember we were almost always Blue Cross Blue Shield and we went to MVP because it was cheaper. And now all of a sudden, it, it, Blue Cross is them back. And I, I told you, I think that they probably see their competition and what the competition is doing and they, and they made some changes. And this is, twenty-six thousand dollars is, is pretty close to a penny on the tax rate. I think that's thirty-three thousand or thirty-four thousand is a penny on the tax rate. So it's, it's, you know, it's three quarters of the way there.
Here's what else we have to consider, I knew there was another one.
Good.
We, we have to remember that, that, that it's a bit of moving parts here. We have, what is it, like twelve to fourteen people on healthcare? And they can change status independent of our decision. So in other words, a single person could get married and then move up. It would double the premium and there's not anything we do about it. So to, to think that we're just, we're going to have to get in the ballpark and we're going to have to do the best we can, but, and the same is true oppositely. If someone has a family and then becomes a single, it's a lower cost. But and the same is true oppositely. If someone has a family and then becomes a single, it's a lower cost. But we've had it happen where the status has changed of an employee. And then, um, there's anything we do about it, Brandon gets a bill and he has to pay it.
Well, and and the and the other half of that, Dave, is is what you were starting with, which is the, um, the six months that we're really not accounting for.
Right.
We're kind of looking backwards. Kelly, you were starting to go head down that road, too. And and that is, so we probably, considering what you just said and that, we need to have a contingency on healthcare. When we when we budget for healthcare, we know what we know what it is for January through June of next year. We don't know what it is from July to December of next year. Because we're not going to see that. Well, actually, we do.
There you are.
Yeah, we do.
You know, it doesn't change until halfway through the next year.
But it's the following. Yeah, it becomes that following.
The last six months.
So we've got to come up with a number that we can use as a contingency on healthcare to make sure we don't fall in that hole at at six months. I think that's what you're talking about, Dave. Part of what you're talking about.
One more thing.
Yes.
Um, I want to see language somewhere, and I don't know that we have it in the healthcare policy, or whether it needs to be a policy, or just a statement, or whether we have a vote on it or not, whether the opt-out insurance clause is limited to existing employees.
I thought we put that in. Did we not?
Well, I'd like to see that in black and white, but I think that's pretty important.
Did we put that in? I don't think we put it in. I think you you've talked to me about that, Brandon.
Yeah, we've talked. We've talked about it, and, um, we do have to revisit the personnel policy in order to do that. Um, and we can do that soon, so.
And we should.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, um.
You have job postings.
Yeah, we got new job. We got new hires coming in. And and if we're if we're going to stop that program, and maybe we do, maybe we need to have a discussion about that. And 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 I think I I went and I said more than I probably should have. Um, I I think in considering that, stopping that program, there there's, we're grandfathering that at this point, as far as I know.
Can you catch August up to what we're talking about? I don't know if you're aware of what we have in August, so let Mike.
I've only read, uh, the material Brandon provided today.
We offer an opt-out program, uh, in Weathersfield. Uh, if an employee chooses not to take the healthcare that we offer here, um, they they can receive up, uh, 50% of the premium that they would normally have. They can receive that as a cash out option. It's capped at 10,000. Um, it does prove to be a saving, you know, small savings to the town. I I mean, I mean, if you have three people and you got, uh, two plans that are four, or three plans that are $14,000 each, um, that's a that's a $21,000 savings to the town. Uh, because you cash out for 21,000 as opposed to providing them with a healthcare at three times 14,000, which is what, 30, 40, 42,000? You know, so there's, it's a, you know, there is a savings there. Um, but there's also a few other scenarios I don't want to discuss right now, or at least one other. Um, Brandon can talk to you about that.
But you do have to have healthcare. So so you can't just work for the town and say, I don't want the insurance. You have to have a written document that says you have healthcare, either from a spouse or a different source.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like you just come to work here and say, I don't feel like having healthcare, and then I'm going, I want the cash.
Yeah, the the questions I had, I had just a few quick ones, and they don't necessarily need to be answered tonight. It's just, um, one of them, it was about the new employees, such as, you know, current numbers versus are we expanding our our number of town employees? Is there any anticipation of that in this future period? Um, I had the same question as, uh, as Mr. Todd on the, uh, feedback of the employees. What's what's the vibe of the town employees? Do they do they like the idea of Blue Cross Blue Shield? Um, which seems pretty popular with government employees. And then, um, it, I wasn't clear, and I didn't read all the tables, um, on are Blue Cross Blue Shield versus the other provider working in any type of group discounts? Um, so if employees as a group collectively decide, hey, let's all go with Blue Cross Blue Shield, does that drive the premiums or co-pays down at all?
No, we're in a small group plan, so.
But that is a group, and it's a small group plan, but the discount is is prorated for that small group.
The last the last question was on the recommendation. Are you recommending one or or would those be like, your recommendation be number one or number two? This is page fourteen of the PDF packet. Um, is your recommendation to do both things or just one of those things?
Yeah, they go hand in hand. Um, so with a high deductible plan and the HSA, it's proven to be more cost effective than the low deductible plan, um, with the HSA. You can only have an HSA with a high deductible plan.
Yeah.
Employees deem it beneficial because they use the HSA, so.
So so one other consideration, and I don't know how you want to word this, or maybe take it up or not take it up. But every other time that we've had the HSA, it's a check that's written to the employees on January 1st. So let's start a conversation about quarterly payments or about, or maybe not. I don't know what, because there's sometimes there's been a need to meet that, to take that HSA for deductible, and I understand that. But I'd also like to guard myself under the potential that an employee could take that HSA money and then leave. So it would be a bonus, and then it is not, it's not given back to us. So I don't know whether or not other towns that you could ask whether they have HSAs or not, or how they how they work that, or whether they just look the other way. I don't really. I'd like to hear.
Yeah, let me do some, a little research about that. It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, one of the one of the thoughts that that just triggered, though, because we, Dave and I talked about this earlier, um, earlier in the week, actually, um, is you and I talked about an HRA. And if we go to like quarterly payments and you have the problem come up that you just said, where, you know, somebody has a larger payment and they don't have the cash, does that then become a reimbursement where they have to pay it, and they come to us, and we give them the balance of their HSA now, or or they or they have to pay it and wait until the deposit's made? You you know, those are some things that we might have to talk about.
Those are things that I would like to research. I was, when you guys were talking about that, this is second year, I was thinking about some form of hybrid option that would protect the town and the employees.
Okay.
So the the key would be, what is the deductible? So if I, let's just pretend that all of us were employees, and we all got the five, what is it, the $5,000 or $6,000 HSA?
Yeah.
So you get that for January, and it either goes in your account, or you get to use it to meet the deductible in that year of some medical event that you had. So if it's paid quarterly, you might not like that idea, because if you had, if you had, uh, something happen, so it's $1,500, let's say, every quarter, but but if you needed that in May, then you wouldn't have that amount to use for to meet the deductible.
Yeah, we can't really.
So I don't really think you can do that. So you start getting complicated.
I'll do a little bit of research on it.
So that money doesn't sit in an account, and then when people need it, you don't give it to them?
That would be an HRA. And those are reimbursement accounts, which means they have to pay first and then submit the payment in the bill.
That's not the way it works with us.
And that's what I was asking Brandon, is if there was a different way for that to happen.
We don't. We don't have to pay anything out of pocket. It all comes right through the office.
Is is that a reimbursement account? Or how is that?
We have an account set up with X amount of dollars in it that they give us at the beginning of each year. And we don't have to pay anything out of our own pocket. They pay it all.
I think we can have those discussions.
Yeah.
Let me find out more.
I I think I've heard of this, too.
Next week, so.
We do a lot of the research, and and we'll read.
So when is, so you've said that you've run this by the people that work. I'm a little surprised that that we don't see some more statements or something, because healthcare can be controversial. I mean, sometimes there's a surprise inside the plan that people didn't know about, that are going to be affected by the plan. You know, all of a sudden, let's say, well, eyesight's not covered, but it was covered under MVP. There could be a, you know, there could be some language that is a little bit up in the air.
We've completed the analysis between the two plans, and in turn, they're pretty good.
Okay.
Um.
Or prescriptions or something. You know, there's, it seems to be. And I think the carriers are notorious for this, because they'll say they're holding the line and no price increase. All of a sudden, bingo. Surprise.
Well, they did increase the price.
Yeah.
14.2% or 12.4%?
Maybe like 12.5%. It was like 18% last year.
All right.
Tom DeScocci, Tom in Rockingham and Windsor, and it's, I guess, spend double vision increases for quite some time.
It has been.
Well, no, MVP wasn't. It was a year or two ago that they held the line, but then all of a sudden, we found out at the 11th hour that they raised the deductible and the plan changed. So that's what I mean. All of a sudden.
That was a significant increase in the deductible.
So they could take the percentage and go home with it. It meant that either the town or the employee had to pay a lot more money.
Yes. Yeah, and that's when we kicked the the total up that we give to the HSAs.
Yes, by law. It went from like 5,000 to 6,500. Yes.
Yeah, it was. It was a big jump. Okay, so we're good with it with that. Just any other questions on that for tonight? Anybody? Um, quarter one financial report.
I'm going to do this real quick. Should I combine my, the finance report into a town manager update or?
Um, if you're going to do that, do you want to skip right to the gentleman I believe is here for that purpose?
I got way, I got way.
Yeah, preferably. I do have to run at seven thirty tonight.
I know, so.
I have 15 minutes.
You may have 17. We'll see. Um, but but I see what you're getting at, and he's here for that purpose. You brought him in under that, under that. So go.
All right. Uh, general fund revenues are at 31% and expenses are at 30%. Um, you know, in a perfect world, it would be 25% because we're in Q1. Um, but it works a little bit different with the general fund. Um, we paid a couple of larger annual expenses in Q1, which includes our county tax and our county courthouse bond payment. And we've also transferred, uh, 40,000 to our department apparatus reserve, um, which was a special article that the residents voted on at town meeting, and 10,000 of police cruiser reserves. So that kind of increases our percentages for expenditures. Um, on the revenue side, we receive our current use payment in lump sum each year during Q1. Um, so that also kind of makes our revenues look like they're bigger than they really are. That'll kind of flush out over the course of Q2 and Q3. Um, highway fund, highway fund revenues are at 31% and expenses are at 28%. Um, same same thing here. At first glance, it looks a little high. Um, but we paid several annual expenses in Q1, including our annual payments for the grader and dump truck. Um, and we also received our state aid payment for highway in Q1, making our revenues look a little bit higher than they should be. Um, solid waste fund fixed revenues are at 99%, which is around 1171 lower than where they should be for Q1. Uh, we should have received 100%. Um, however, solid waste fund fixed revenues came in a little bit lower this year. Um, and I don't think we'll be receiving at 1171. Solid waste fund fixed revenues are generated from permit stickers and an allocation formula is used to set each town's allocation. Uh, so what we're seeing in those fixed revenues are the, um, allocations from West Windsor, Reading, and others. Variable revenues are at 28%. These revenues are generated from punch ticket sales. Total revenues are at 58%. Fixed expenses are at 28% and variable expenses are at 25%. Um, so variable expenses are right on target. Fixed expenses are slightly high due to the transition and transportation employees. Um, overall, this solid waste fund appears to be on track. However, additional analysis will be completed between Q1 and Q2 to make projections through year end to determine if we need to make any adjustments to the punch ticket. At this time, I don't think we need to. So it looks like, uh, punch ticket revenues coming in 3% higher than variable expenditures, so, which is good.
Good. Um, I know you got to get out of here, so you want to go right to this gentleman?
Yeah.
Now? And and you are?
I'm Rick Morales, voting up for especially with the SBA, a small business administration.
Yeah.
So I think we.
We'll come back to questions and hold him until at least quarter of. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody else will be in the main, but we'll get them up for the next questions.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions tomorrow.
Okay, we just, we got that basin bridge we want to get to, too. And then, after that, I think we're in pretty good shape. You can fly through the rest. Go ahead.
Thank you for your time and opportunity. So, um, we are a small business administration, but the Office of Disaster Assistance, not regular SBA. Uh, we not only assist businesses, but also for owner rental and profits. I came here for multiple reasons. It's not only for towns that, um, have like damages on survivors. I know that, um, some towns, um, they are receiving public assistance, uh, from from FEMA, but we don't provide, and that's one of the differences. Uh, we are SBA. We don't provide funds for public assistance for government. Uh, that's USDA. I brought the fact sheet of the USDA, too, that federal agency, rural development. They have funds for public assistance, for business repair, for homeowners repairs. And FEMA, they have, you all know that they have for homeowners and renters and for public assistance, too. We don't provide funds for government, but we came, um, uh, we are here because the deadline is for SBA and FEMA. They were extended for survivors until October 31. That's very important to know. So, uh, we are visiting, too, because, uh, you all can help us to reach the most people as possible, sharing the information through social media, website. That's one of our priorities of us visiting the government. Uh, we have been doing media, too, newspaper, interviews, radio interviews, sharing the information uh, about the SBA, because everybody know about FEMA, but know about SBA, and you all know that the people get discouraged with the SBA, because the main difference is that FEMA is grants, free money, and the SBA is low interest rate money from the federal government. And I thought that's why I came here, too, to explain how the people can use this in their advantage. I know that not a lot of people, um, have damages here, but if you all have, you you can have friends, networking, families in other cities, towns, or counties here in Vermont. So that's why we visit every town in each primary county, and the, sorry, some primary county. That means a lot of damages, even though in some towns you can see it. So first, uh, as a general rule, always homeowners, rental nonprofits, and businesses, they need to register for with FEMA. As an exception, the businesses can apply directly to the SBA. Uh, also, the people use this, for example, if they have insurance, instead of waiting for that payment or settlement, they might get the money faster with the SBA. And that's one of the benefits, because we have the one-year deferment with zero percent interest rates. So the people, instead of waiting for that payment, they can review quicker. That's one benefit. And also, we explain benefits for homeowners and renters. The people don't understand that they need to complete the procedures with the SBA, because because we were joined with FEMA. For example, if FEMA, if if FEMA denies you, and then, most of the time, they refer the people, the survivors, the people that is affected, to SBA. And if the people don't complete the procedures, they are not going to receive anything. Why? Because if you are denied by the SBA, too, SBA might refer the people back to FEMA, and FEMA might give them ODA or disaster assistance, like grants. In short, at least they can have hope to receive something if they complete the procedures with the SBA. That's very important to know. Some people that is denied by SBA, they use that denigration letter, those grants of denigration, they attach that for to appeal, uh, the application of of FEMA. That's another benefit. If, for example, if they receive 20,000, 30,000, or 10,000, or or any other amount, and they are not satisfied, that's a way, um, to to receive, uh, more funds, to increase those funds. Of course, it's not guaranteed, but that's a form to use this, uh, application of SBA. I always recommend, uh, to apply with, um, I always recommend, uh, to apply with, um, Red Cross, our Bay Area. And we are an alternative, of course, with FEMA, SBA. Uh, it's not duplication of benefits if you apply with FEMA and SBA. Of course, the USDA, like the fact sheet that I dropped, they are an alternative too. They are bigger. We are like the name, small business, smaller. We don't receive a lot of funds from the, uh, federal government. Uh, so, uh, right now we have a DRC, that's from FEMA. Uh, but we were there too. If a person go to a DRC, they can apply with FEMA and SBA on the same day, on the same day, same building. Right now it's on Ludlow on Main Street. Uh, that's a, a good place to go. We always recommend the people to apply on the centers, disaster recovery centers, instead of applying online. I came also here because if visiting information is not only important for these past events, but for possible future events. At least if you learn today one thing, that's very helpful and valuable for people in the future because you can help the constituents better, knowing more than before. That's why I also, uh, come to visit, uh, the government, the center boards. In other states, it's city, city council, county commission meetings, it's different. But in Vermont, the composition of government is different, so. Also, between the benefits, the interest rates are fixed, they don't change for the life of the loan. The people can choose between seven and thirty years. Some people that choose thirty years and if they don't take like a lot of thousand, I, I have seen payments of twenty dollars, less than twenty dollars a month. And what's the main purpose of that? What's the priority? To help you rebuild quicker and you never know from what part are you going to get the money faster? That's why I always recommend the people apply with everything, the first day, the first day of the disaster, apply with everything. Because that's the priority, priority of everyone, of, of everyone, to rebuild quicker. Some, some people, they need to rebuild like for yesterday. Some people is living with, uh, their, uh, family in other cities, towns or counties, even in New Hampshire. That's why I visit, I try to visit the most, uh, the most, uh, towns as possible and counties because I know that the people that were flooded, they, some of them are, um, are living with their families in different towns or counties or states, even in New Hampshire or Massachusetts. So that's why all this information is very, very important. Also, no collateral, up to twenty-five thousand, imagine no guarantee, you don't have to put nothing in guarantee. The limits are higher. Uh, our programs are for physical damages, that mean, that means for infrastructure, real estate, inventory equipment. For economic damages, that means for the losses in profits, invento, uh, um, payroll or dinner expenses to keeping the businesses on business. That's more for businesses. And also we have funds for property damages like furniture, clothing, vehicles. And also we have funds for mitigation, I, I explained that. That's to prevent possible future events like roof traps, churches. Of course, we don't have loans for that, but if they approve you a loan, you can request additional funds for that. So it's not guaranteed, you have to request it and qualify. So we have so much, uh, benefits, like for example, these are kind loans. That's why I always, I don't like to, to say that word, but I have to say it sometimes. Because, uh, for, you can request forbearances, deferments, if the person lost, lost the job or, or they are not making any profits, they can request those type of, of benefits. Imagine with other, uh, financial, final, financial institutions, it's you pay or you pay, you know what I mean? It's like this, and this is for the people in need. If, also the people get discouraged with this, but the interest rates are backwards. That means that with normal is financial institutions, the higher the credit score, uh, the lower the interest rate. But here it's backwards. The higher, the higher your credit score, the higher the interest rates are gonna be. So that's, that's why, that's why, but because that's for the people in need. That, what's behind that, that's saying, hey, these loans are for the people that, that they lack resources. But I always recommend, like, the banks in other states in, because in small towns, they know everybody, they are friends and neighbors. So if a person in a bank, if they know that a friend can have a better interest rate with the SBA, they refer them, if they don't qualify with a bank, or if, or if they can have better interest rates, they refer them with the SBA. So always I recommend the people to go to different places to see in what, uh, place they can have better, uh, interest rates. So it's not guaranteed that, because if we are backward, uh, you are gonna have a better interest rate with a bank. Uh, you, for a person with a good credit score. So, yeah, uh, that's, as summary, I know that the agenda is tight, I can't be here talking about more. I don't want to, you know, interrupt the, the meeting. Also, if you have any questions?
Uh, I do, but I have a question, we get at it, we need to get to him on first, so don't go anywhere.
Do we have, has anybody with a residence affected by a flood come to the town office and ask for help from the SBA or from USDA or from anybody? Has anybody come in here and said, can you help me? Direct me to go see the SBA or to go, has anybody come in the town office?
So I'm working with some, with a resident on one oh six.
Okay, good.
In the USDA.
Okay.
But I'll definitely, you know, keep an air open if anybody needs the SBA. And if you can leave your contact information.
I always say, hey, we, we are not the best option, but for some people, we are the only option, the best option, we are an, an alternative. We have approved more than twenty million, so the people is taking advantage of this, yeah.
We, we, we had talked once before about having these resources, uh, set up and understood in the office.
He's got his, he's got his contact number on this one.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've got that.
Some advertising material.
Yeah, of course, they have, I saw it on the news there.
The, the basin bridge you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so.
I have to, let me show you. Also, the eight hundred number here, the people can call to, uh, they can answer you any question. They can tell you about the centers location, that number is very important to the eight hundred.
So one last thing, do, do, you're, you were saying that there's a deadline here for your office in Ludlow of the thirtieth of October?
October thirty-one, thirty-one.
October.
October thirty-first. That's the deadline, that's the deadline for physical damages, but the deadline for economic damages, that's for the next year, April of the next year.
Okay.
But that's the one that is approaching. After register with FEMA, also that's the deadline, that's, uh, very important.
October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Exactly, yeah, very important, that twenty-two.
Coming right up.
Yep, go.
So, so what, you don't know this yet. So, so part of the complication, and I, I'm glad that you said whatever SBA has jurisdictional, but whatever, twenty million dollars, whatever. There's a definite problem with the government, okay? I've been talking with, uh, Will Stevens at Senator Sanders' office and, uh, I can't remember her first name, but Monroe is a, an aide, an ag aide with Senator Welch. All the money for federal things are up in the air because of the lapse in financial years on nine thirty, which is September thirtieth, the beginning of a new year, October first. And now there's no Speaker of the House.
Yeah.
Okay? So money is not around.
Let me get to the basin bridge.
And, and so I found out today, for instance, that the, the grant that you filed for me on behalf of the B-GAAP, no, that's, that's out.
Really?
So, so there, there's a lot of moving parts that's going on. And I hope what's gonna happen is they're gonna, because of this mess in Washington, that they're gonna extend the deadlines. They, they kind of got to because if, th- those two aides in the Senator's office told me that there is, there was a continuing resolution that was passed for only forty-five days that opens a new door to disaster funds. But there, there needs to be still finality on what the dispersment of the funds are. And right now, there doesn't seem to be any.
Okay.
So my next thing about the basin bridge was, and I, and I found out from Ray today that we gave him the kind of the authority to ask for what it would cost to rent a bridge for a time.
Yes, until the new one is.
Okay, so, and he told me today that he had made a phone call to one or two companies.
Yes.
So, but there was no word back. The danger, the danger in us waiting for the FEMA or any other reconciliation of funds are that we have a engineer's report that says the underpinning of the bridge is damaged.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that I, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm not sure that I want to live with that.
Yeah, there's no plan on keeping that, like, as, as soon as we have an estimate and you get a temporary bridge there, it's gonna.
You're gonna, you're gonna bring it to us and then say, can, can the authorization be made? Okay, good.
So remember that are different deadlines for public assistance versus, versus individual assistance? This is for individual assistance only, it's not for public assistance, that deadline.
Right, right, and I was gonna go there, you didn't get to it.
And, and remember, this is, this is the second. This is the second, the second, uh, extension. The, the first was a, a month of extension and this is like two weeks for another extension, two extensions. So it's not guaranteed that they are going to extend again for the individual assistance, so.
For business.
Um, uh, homeowners, rental nonprofit with the SBA. Uh, with FEMA is homeowners, renters, nonprofits. But they need to, the businesses, they need to register with FEMA too because we need, uh, ready, uh, that registration number, we need that for, with the SBA. So, and also very quickly, uh, the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, I know that from the two hundred thirty-seven thousand in Vermont, not a lot of businesses, you know? But, uh, we have that resource partner, they have an office in Springfield, here in Windsor. They have business advisor, they know, they are very valuable and they, they know about. They know about SBA, USDA, FEMA, and they are helping the people with the application with, with the state. They are helping the people with that too, with the application. The, the government said of Vermont that they were going to give a thousand, so they, they are helping with all that. Each county, they have a business advisor of SBDC, Small Business Development Center. They are, uh, very helpful too, a good resource.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you taking your time to come talk to us.
Is he coming back or not?
Is Brandon, no, he's gone.
Oh.
But he'll be on the phone.
Oh.
Right?
I don't know.
He said he was gonna be on the phone.
Yep. I, I guess that's through you.
That would be, yes. I was gonna say.
Brandon, I, I'll give you an update, Brandon starts vacation, uh, actually at the end of the day today, which this meeting kind of cut into, but he stuck around for that. But he has a friend coming in on the train into Springfield and he's gotta go pick him up. So that's what's going on there.
Or Claymont, the train goes.
Yeah, must be, he said Springfield, but.
The train doesn't go to Springfield.
I know. I, 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 I.
Oh.
Springfield, Mass?
That would be Brandon, Massachusetts.
That would not surprise me a bit. I mean, he goes to Massachusetts for a haircut.
Tell him to stay on the train to Claymont.
He goes to Claymont. You should go with him for a haircut.
He goes to like.
To Massachusetts. He go, he go to Massachusetts to get his beard trimmed. It's like, come on, what are you doing? Well, I trust him.
You're probably right.
I'm sure she probably is.
If you're right, you could stay on the train, you go to Claymont.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
I'll let you, I'll let you know when he calls then.
He probably already.
No, not yet.
His ears are ringing and, okay. Uh, Village Waste Water Committee, uh, second reading. And he's gone and I don't know if we have the updates. I, I guess you can tell by looking at this whether the updates are in there.
Um, yes. Yes, so he made, um, the corrections, uh, they were editorial, just, just administrative. One was to change two instances of commission to committee. And then another was to remove, uh, a single word, which was amended policy, so it just read policy. Those were the changes. Um, as I mentioned last board, I did submit to Brandon, uh, to help keep this policy moving forward uh, and to, uh, to address a couple of minor things. I submitted, uh, my edits and updates to him to disseminate, uh, to everyone. And that'll give you an opportunity before next board to review those.
Okay, so they're not in this copy here?
They're not, this is his corrections from the last meeting. And then I had submitted to him today, uh, my edits, which I labeled version three, uh, which he can distribute. I gave it to him in a Word document also, just so that, um, anybody who's interested can review it, comment, and also discuss it at the next board.
Go ahead, Emery.
Uh, sure, I can, I could hit a couple of key points, um, briefly. I think that based on the engineering study and the, and the, um, scope of the engineering study, that a joint committee, uh, for both Ascutney and Perkinsville would lend itself to a greater degree of success. You'd have that institutional knowledge of the members, uh, to, to address both village needs. Um, I also think that based on the Vermont guidance from the state, having a member of the planning, um, commission on the, versus a select board member a- as part of that committee would be really helpful. Because then the, then the planning, uh, commission is nested. Ideally, one of the comments I made is ideally you'd have a, and it's not a hard requirement, but ide- ideally you'd have a, a Ascutney resident who's impacted as well as a Perkinsville resident who's impacted.
As soon as there seems to be two different issues, one water and one wastewater.
No, it's wastewater on whole bay.
This is, this is wastewater.
It's wastewater, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, for instance, the, the engineering, yeah, and I, I very carefully read through the, the entire Otter Creek engineering report. And I tried to make sure that any input I had was, was in line, um, with, with this agreement so that it, it would resolve any conflicts and, and help it be more successful, um, you know, being, being completed. And for instance, the title of it is Perkinsville and Ascutney Wastewater Feasibility Study is how it's addressed.
Right.
That's what we picked for.
Right. Right, so it makes sense that you'd want some, some feedback from over here. I like the client commission idea as well. Um, the, the, um, item one in this thing that is in front of us says the purpose of the Village Waste Water Committee is to support and act as the liaison, the liaison for the town of Weathersfield and Otter Creek Engineering for the Perkinsville Ascutney Water, Wastewater Feasibility Study. The engineer will prepare an evaluation of potential community water solutions, uh, for the Ascutney Perkinsville villages and provide an order of magnitude, cost, opinions for alternatives and provide recommendations for further study on a feasibility report. Somewhere I, I saw something that was a little bit more defined in, and may, and maybe I was incorrect. Maybe I read it wrong the first time because it made more sense to me that time. Yeah. The engineer will prepare an evaluation. I think I missed that the first time I read it.
If you're reading, are you using, reading version three? Is say in the top subject line draft version three?
Oh, we only have the.
Oh, you only have the one in the, in the select board minutes?
Yeah.
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 Are we? Clarification. Are we reading at the policy and procedures, purpose and mission?
That's what I'm, policies and procedures, purpose and mission, that's what I was reading. Yep, number one, purpose and, and mission. And I'm, I'm actually okay with that. We were, because there was something else that I read that seemed to give the, uh, the committee the ability to make decisions on behalf of the town and communicate those decisions and directions to the, um, uh, engineering firm.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm on board with that.
And I addressed, I addressed that exact same concern, um, and so I think.
I think this is Brandon's new version.
Yeah, version, version three, um, uh, in, in essentially the committee is an advisory committee with a member of the planning commission. They have to provide the select board with updates. Um, there has to be some community outreach, which is part of.
Yeah.
Part of the process that, that has to be followed.
That's more part D.
Yeah, and then, uh, the other thing is the, the, uh, item duties and responsibilities. I, I added a paragraph that says cooperate with select board, planning commission, zoning board of adjustment, road committee and other municipal or private organizations on matters affecting the wastewater project and resources, um, of the municipality.
You added that? Because I, I have that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have that.
You might be looking at.
It's in B.
It, it is, and, and it was number four, duties and responsibilities. A, the Village Waste Water Committee shall be designated to act as the owner's representative with respect to the services to be performed or furnished by the engineer and responsibilities of owner under the feasibility study agreement.
No.
The committee shall have authority to transmit instructions, receive information and render decisions relative to the agreement on behalf of the town of Weathersfield.
And this is, this is where we have to have additional discussion because part of the agreement, the agreement that we signed.
Yes.
Part of the agreement, um, uh, instructs, it, it says you have to have a designated person who can act on behalf of the town. However, I, I completely agree with your point, which is the oversight responsibility and fiscal responsibility of the select board. Um, ha- that cooperation has to take place. So I, I'm not sure how we want to address that in the, in the duties, responsibilities and policies.
I could say A, the Village Waste Water Committee shall be advisory. I mean, we've had other committees before and then they seem to take on a life of their own, which is described in A, which says that. own, which is described in A, which says that any other body that's in the town, you don't count, and that this committee happens to make, to be the decision maker in this study, that's where you run into hot water.
And I think the person that's gonna pass along any decisions is right, is the man who sits right there. Whether those decisions come from us, or through us in, in cooperation with the, the committee, but I, I don't think it should be just us, or just the committee necessarily, it's, we all, I think that's what you're saying, we all need to be working together.
There all has to be coordination, especially for fiscal decisions at, at the right level.
Yeah.
But you do need, you do have to have a, a lead rep on the committee who can act on behalf of the town to fulfill the obligations of this, this agreement with Otter Creek Engineering. The scope has to be appropriate, and has to be in line with the agreement.
I think right now, that, you know, that Otter Creek has a grant, they have funds available to do whatever the scope of the work that we're doing. This board voted to authorize that, and then Brandon kinda is the, is the person that takes control of all those kinds of things.
Yeah, I, I thought the committee was something that they recommended in there.
Yeah, we didn't have to have it, they recommended it, is what I thought it was.
Yeah.
And more, and to me, it's more, it wasn't getting into the financial decision making, it was to provide a face to a topic that an outside entity could not possibly gain, because they're a hired firm to study the engineering. The residents, or whoever the committee makeup is, has a much more personal touch to...
They know who the people are.
Exactly, well, in, in the end, the, the only thing that's getting spent right now is the money to do the study.
The grant money, yeah.
Once you finish the study, any decision on what you're gonna do moving forward is something totally different, and totally separate. That, that becomes a vote of the, the board, and probably the people, depending on what that is.
I think the description that Otter Creek gave us in the very beginning, that said what they were gonna do, and what the cost was gonna be, I think you don't wanna muddy the waters, or anybody does, that ship has sailed. They're looking around at different options for both villages now, they have been for whatever, six, eight months.
He's bringing up financial decisions, and financial decisions would be based on the outcome of the study.
We haven't gotten that part yet.
Yeah, that's the, to scope this, to scope it back in, the policy addresses the agreement, and in the agreement on page seventeen with Otter Creek, designated representatives within the execution of the agreement, engineer and owner, town of Weathersfield being owner, shall designate specific individuals to act as engineer and owner's reps with respect to the services to be performed or furnished by the engineer, and responsibilities owner under this agreement, under the agreement. Such an individual shall have the authority to transmit instructions, receive information, and render decisions relative to this agreement on behalf of the respected party whom the individual represents.
Okay, so for staying consistent with that, then on this, so, go, go ahead.
My, it's Brandon.
Yeah. Go ahead.
For, for that part of the agreement, so this, this wastewater feasibility study is limited to the amount of funding that we received at the subsidy always, and the authorized representative, I think what they're talking about there is, is the ability that I have to pay, to pay for the agreement through the subsidy, I don't think it's any financial ability to, to do more.
No.
But, but it does say, Brandon, when you're reading the words that are in, in front of us, it says the Village Wastewater Committee shall be designated to act as the owner's representative. So it does make the committee the, the, the voting authority.
I don't think that, I don't think that was the intent.
Okay, glad I caught it.
I think we need to scope, scope it in to, to the study, and within the parameters of this...
If, and we can do that, if the Village Wastewater is designated to be the owner's representative, then there needs to be some sort of language in there that, that clarifies that, that that committee, the information that, the decisions or requests that they make onto the engineering firm are decisions that have been worked out through the committee and the town. In, in other words, it's not just the committee making the decisions, that, so we just need to fix that language so that it, it, does that make sense, Dave?
Yes, and for all intents and purposes for tonight, I wanna be really clear, so get this really clear in the call on the minutes.
Please.
I'm going to, to move that we continue the second reading of the Village Wastewater policy to our November sixth as a meeting, because we need to keep this on track, but there seems to be some clarification that's needed in the words here in the second reading, so we don't wanna move it to the third reading, because it's still in the second reading. So the, the motion will be that we continue the second reading of the Village Wastewater Committee Policy and Procedures to a date certain, which is, what is the next meeting? November, uh, calendar, six is it, am I wrong? I don't know.
Today's the sixteenth.
Just wanna get it all right.
Six.
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 Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, Brandon's not here, he's on the road, and there seems to be some little, you need to get the language correct.
I'll second, I'll second the motion. Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we continue the second reading.
I don't like the idea that he's driving and paying attention to the meeting. He needs to pay attention to his driving.
I don't care, because I'm not in a car. I'm sitting here, I'm safe.
He's on the phone, we, we could, he could get a ticket, he's on the phone, unless, unless it's Bluetooth.
Are you headed to Springfield, Mass?
Hey, we have a question, are you going your way to Springfield, Mass?
Correct.
Did you, did you know that the train comes to Claremont, New Hampshire?
And Windsor.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it only runs on, it only runs like in the morning.
Oh.
So if you, if you, if you have a job, and you work in New York City, let's say, you, there's no way that you can catch that train.
But you're on vacation in the morning.
What, what, you could've just sent him a bu, you could've sent him a bus ticket out of Springfield, Mass.
Yeah, I know. I'm impressed, and we've been best friends since we were little kids.
Just take it on you, Brandon.
Thank, thank you, Brandon. Anne Marie?
I have a question back to this...
Yeah, because we're not necessarily done with it, just, we, we did vote to continue the reading, but, go ahead.
But I just have a question just in general.
You're okay, yeah.
My impression, just, this is totally way up here, is that the condition was just basically to be a liaison with the board, to support back, because nobody seems to know day to day what this engineering study is doing.
That's what we thought it was.
And that kind of thing, just filling in, reporting back to the board once a month or something, or reporting back to Brandon or whoever, but just as an advisory, like liaison, and not like any decisions. But the other thing is, when I was reading this thing, I got from the state, I was organizing the wastewater committee study, is, it talks about how the committee itself should do these outreach, do the outreach meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I thought the scope, the RFP for the engineering study, was that they would survey households, do they need it, did I, you know, is this necessary, would you, would you hook on if you could, you know, that kind of thing, because these are low to middle income people, to, you know, keeping that in mind, and also I think the community outreach should be done by the engineering committee, because they're trying to do focus groups, and, you know, and get feedback, what is the committee to be sitting in the audience, also taking this feedback, but they're the ones, the engineering firm should organize all this.
Didn't they talk about that in their presentation?
Yes. Yeah, they did, but, but Anne Marie's not far off the mark, so they do need to gather information about, about that kind of thing for the villages, about that, and I think you're right, that they are better equipped to do that. And, but I'd like to ask you this, as a person who submitted your name as well, so when I read this, and before I came to the meeting, I said, you know what, I just talk to myself a lot, I don't know that I'm on board with having a policy to do this, I really am not. Because when you read it, and I'm a member of this committee, I'm a volunteer, and I'm reading this, I'm reading some of these rules here, and it's saying, the committee shall comply with all the provisions under Vermont Open Meeting Law, the committee shall publish an agenda with the statutes and everything, and I'm, I'm saying to myself, listen, listen, yeah, but I'm just saying to myself, listen, this is kinda like meeting around the coffee house, trying to gather information about, learning about what is wrong with, what are the villages with wastewater. This, to me, has a lot of legal language that I'm not gonna be willing to serve as a committee person.
And I think a lot of people are skewed about that.
Yes.
And it's just because everybody's intention was originally, let's just find out what the engineering committee is doing, and have a direct report to the board or to Brandon, and keep up to date with it, and say, okay, now they're going to study three different sites, they've decided that this regional solution that's gonna, and then we'll figure out a cost, and then we'll figure out, are there possible land to put this regional solution on? And also, how many people, if only five people are interested in Weathersfield and Perkinsville, are putting in, it's a moot point, and at least we'll have some dollar figures, we'll have some, something to discuss, because right now, we don't know what's happening.
Well, and, and to that point, like, like you went into what they talked about with the regional type thing, and, and I've, oh, I, I, when I spoke with Dave about this, I, I said, don't we need to know what the problem is, and what all the solutions to the problem is? Maybe it's a regional, maybe it's, maybe there's other independent solutions for, for each different situation, because wastewater treatment has changed a lot in just the last ten years, it's huge. So there might be other solutions, and, and they may even be more feasible, who knows? I don't, but I wanna know all those, I wanna know all of that stuff. So, so I see, I hear what you're saying, we, we continued the second reading, so this would be a good time to make other changes. I think what I'm hearing from you, and from you, is, is it necessary for the meetings, number three, to have all that criteria?
Right. Well, then it says, the very first one, it says that the committee shall, now here we get into legal terms, have at least five members. Let's say there's only four, or let's say that, does...
And it's all enough, the point was to be...
Yeah, I know, it's a little weird.
So we, so we could simplify some of it, I think this was, I think this was Brandon's first shout at it, and Brandon's, Brandon, God bless him, he's an over thinker, you know, but he gets it all in there, and, and then we can back out of it, we can back out, that's the purpose of this meeting now.
But it seems too much.
And that's fine, and we can agree on that now, that, that's the point, obviously.
I would, I would say, the concern I have is, you can do things informally, or you can look long term and think of having a good foundation, because the wastewater committee might have more enduring work, and it falls in line with the, with a revision of the town plan, what direction the town wants to go in, do we wanna develop Ascutney, Perkinsville, both, one versus the other as part of our, as part of our town plan, master plan, and then I do think we have a responsibility as a town to shape the progress of what's going on with the wastewater effort, that, I will say, most committees have these same rules, these are just standard municipal rules for committees in Vermont, and that, that's the accuracy of it. But if, if it's gonna be, if we're gonna stand up a committee to look at it, and it's going to have costs for the town that can affect all the taxpayers, one, one option of the study is that it might only be six or eight residents in Perkinsville that are impacted, and the engineers might provide options to, to specifically address that, but it also, it also might have a greater impact, such as if there's more development in Perkinsville and/or versus Ascutney, that the impacts could be on the entire town. And so I just, I just think that even if you started a committee with a smaller group, having someone from the planning commission dialed in gives you some expertise, and I also think you don't want an engineering company to have a lack of involvement from a, from a governing body. You don't, you don't want the engineering team to shape the, the desired outcome, the community and the residents need to shape that, and then whether it's a, and, and the, the agreement has a lot of responsibilities, I mean, there's probably fifty responsibilities for Weathersfield in this, and probably a hundred for the engineering firm, but I, I think it's a, I think a partnership is gonna yield the greatest success. People in Perkinsville do collectively deserve to have some type of community event, or a town hearing, where they can go and voice their concerns, and it can be recorded in the form of minutes, and people can document what their challenges, concerns, and fears are with the current wastewater system, and, and that, that way it, it's captured, just like Dave mentioned earlier, as a matter of public record. I think you need a public record to have that, to have that input, because we might be obligating funds, and having some formality in the beginning, like I said, sets a good foundation.
Well, and you actually could have a lapse that would occur if there isn't the rules, where, you know, well, no, we don't, we're not required to take minutes, so, and then all of a sudden, there's something that happens.
So, is there a, is there a, and maybe I'm gonna answer my own question, is a chapter located about wastewater in the planning commission, in the town plan?
A chapter on, on wastewater? No, because the town, the town has no responsibility.
So it defers anything to do with state programs?
To A and R, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Anne Marie?
I agree with you, the town should have a bigger vision. I also agree that this wastewater committee, maybe quite a fill, and to have a long term to, you know, study downtown, or whether we want for the future of downtown Perkinsville, whether we want, that would take, I think, the other, other, maybe another committee.
Oh, a town plan, master plan.
Yeah, but, but it's also a very small town, and it's hard to get people to come out. We had the village trustees, which I was chair for like seven, eight years, nobody, nobody would come to this meeting, to any meeting. You know, we would just like talk about, oh, we should put sidewalks in town, and everybody would come out, you know, put that on the agenda, even though we were nothing to do that. But nobody would come out, and we dissolved the village trustees, because there was no interest in, in being part of a governing body or vision state, and these are small towns, with either people working, were not interested, it's hard to get, to get these groups, it's not just Weathersfield, it's throughout the state, it's, you know, it's just the batter of Vermont.
I think we have four, four volunteers right now for the wastewater committee?
But, but what Anne Marie is saying is very true, and very accurate, in, in many of the things she, she said, I, I was thinking, as you were saying, and I was like, that's planning commission, that's planning commission, that's planning commission, nobody's there either. Right, right, it's already there, we already have, if you created a committee to do some of those things, it's, it's the planning commission that they need to take it to. They're already there, just go.
You could, you could...
They're already there.
And it may be very well possible that you designated as a responsibility of the planning commission to, to run lead, as a designee, as, as the owner's rep?
Let's talk further with Brandon about that, and, and, because that's already moved to the next, right?
Yeah, the, the, seems like the language of the existing second reading...
Yeah.
Needs to be reworded somehow on a few different lines, I mean, so I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna lose, the reason of my motion was, I didn't wanna lose the place in the, in the process, but I also wanted to recognize that it really wasn't the right words that we wanted to fit in there for the second reading, because you don't wanna move something to the third reading, because then, then it's, like, you need to make a decision whether you adopt it, or it's over, you don't wanna do that.
Right. Go ahead, Anne.
I have one last thing to put.
Sure.
On the state thing, it's like we are to find help, and it's just like even the state will give the town a person at no cost to buy a third on, you know, this whole thing, so there are resources, and Brandon aware, and contact information, we can call them and say, this is getting mired in the town, or, you know, or this is, whatever, you know, and there are resources that the state devised, because this is an important, one important thing, wastewater, nonsense the Reagan administration has so much money been put into wastewater and water treatment, basically because of the flooding around the country and stuff like that, so they are beefing up all this money, which is probably tied up in Congress right now, but, what's this money? But, once this money is there, it may not come again for another 15, 20, 20 years.
Or more.
So this is, yeah, so this is a reason to look at this seriously. You know, with some vision. Totally agree with you, you need to be a vision. But I don't think this wastewater committee would be able to take on downtown designation, you know, building centers and businesses.
That's, that's our planning commission.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's too much for a small-
I, I would never propose that for this committee, just to be clear.
Right, yeah, I know.
I think we probably need to find out too. Maybe Brandon can give us an update that the next meeting on the status of what Otter Creek has done.
Yes.
That'd be helpful.
I was, I was thinking that too.
Public information.
Where, where are we at already?
I don't know.
Because I thought you were supposed to have one in September.
Oh, I don't know.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, we're going to get through this thing in time for the, them to need the committee.
See you in a minute.
Uh, so appointments, um-
Move to appoint Brian Bosenberg to the planning commission. Now, does that, is that an unexpired term? Does, does it give a description?
Uh, I'll go into discussion after I get a second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have, we have a second discussion.
All the way back then.
Yes, this is, that, that will be, it's not the same as the select board. The select board is an elected seat, and when you appoint somebody, it is only until an election is had. At the planning commission, those are appointments. And so when you fill, when you fill the appointment, they fill the seat until that term expires.
Which is?
I, I believe he's 26.
I didn't say so.
It, it doesn't, but we'll, that, that will be correct. You know, we'll have that, we'll know what that is.
Just to, just to comment, I would just say that what a great qualification and, uh, reasons for serving and just really impressed with, with this write-up.
Trying to remember, I, I, I think all, uh, seats at the planning commission are three and four-year seats. They're not, there's no two-year seats at the planning commission. They're all even.
There's not a five year?
No, they're three and four.
I knew they were staggered.
And I can't remember if Paul was three or four. Um, if he's a three, it would be 26. If it's a four, it'll be 27. Because he was elected in, he was re-elected to the planning commission in March. Okay? I'm, I'm pretty sure of those numbers, but I, I will make sure those are, and, and Floanne keeps track of that stuff. Uh, that's part of her job. Any further discussion on the appointment of Brian Bosenberg to the planning commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Um, the village wastewater is still continued. We're waiting on the, the finish of this document here. Do I hear a motion to approve the warrants?
I will, but I'm not going to read them. Dan can read them.
You have to.
I, I do.
If you make the motion.
Okay. Uh, yeah, listen to me. General fund.
Right.
Payroll, $16,861.59. Operating expenses, $26,702.17. Highway fund payroll, $8,914.70. Expenses, $21,651.33. Solid waste. Payroll, $1,853.53. Expenses, $2,143.68. Library payroll, $2,391.97. I don't understand what that is. There's zero for operating expenses, but below what it says, TC reserves for $11,055.
For clarification, that's town clerk. Operating expenses.
That is the motion we voted on the last meeting.
Okay. Grand totals, payroll, $30,021.79. Total expenses, $61,552.18.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
August, um, any discussion on the warrants? And, and by the way, I just want to say that I, I think that's the best those warrants have sounded in years.
Paul used to do it a lot. Paul?
Paul.
Paul would have got me.
No, that was, you did a great job, Ken. All right, any discussion on the warrants? No discussions? Um, I, Brandon, are you still with us?
He's gone.
No, he's in a dead zone.
He hit a dead zone.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you are there.
Are you still there, Ken?
Okay, well, I, I just, I did this little math thing in my head that made my head dizzy. And it's the, that first page, all of the stuff, yeah, I know, I'm dizzy most of the time. All of that stuff for CCI literally adds up to like over $6,000. Did anybody else do that math?
I didn't know what it was, so.
I, I saw just, I saw just a large amount of, um, CCI, um-
Well, CCI is, is, is the computer services company that handles, so, so Brandon, what, I, I mean-
September and October.
Okay, so is, is that a fairly normal thing for us to have $6,000 worth of bills for these guys?
It's-
Oh, that's all October.
It's, it's absolutely normal. And-
Okay.
Uh, the cost is around, I want to say the cost is around $2,800 a month. Um, with CCI managed services. Um, the last time I signed a contract, I lost it anyway for five years at a 1% increase per year. And now it's right before the COVID pandemic occurred, um, and inflation occurring. So, we are locked in at a really good rate. I think once we go back with bids, they're going to find that prices have increased.
Well, that, that $2,800 a month, this is covering two months, Dave pointed that out. Um, that would be about right, that, that's $5,600. And then you have a, uh, your computer's in there at 13 and a half. That, like I said, is about 60, 65, 67 is, and I just did it in my head, so. That would, okay.
Was that the purchase of a, are you talking about the purchase of a new computer?
Yeah, for you, replacement laptop that you had to have. I knew about it.
Yes, correct.
I remember.
Okay.
Um, I, I was just trying to clarify that, I was just trying to clarify that that made the 28 number make more sense. For two months.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was for two months.
Okay, any, anybody have any questions on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor of the warrant, signify by saying aye. Aye. So the warrants are unanimous. Uh, we took care of any other business? Anybody have anything else?
I just said one thing, and it's not urgent. Um, I, I know on the Weathersfield website, there is a place where you can subscribe for updates from the town. Um, I put my email address in there, and I, I've not received them. So I'll shoot an email to Brandon, just when he gets back, just, just to have it tested. Have, have a couple people, so, I don't know if it's just me. Um, but, but we want to make sure that when people, uh, sign up to receive updates, the town posts announcements, that they, that they receive them.
Don't get many either, so don't feel bad. We're, we're the lucky ones.
Um, just, so, so the board knows, last Monday, the planning commission meeting was canceled because of the holiday. And there was nothing that said anything about whether it was going to be Tuesday night or just moved out to the other meeting. And I talked to Brandon about, and he's supposed to do some research on that. But he was, I know he was very busy trying to get done this past week with the healthcare and the, um, quarterly reports for us. So, not that it's that urgent, but I did talk to him with, about, we need to have some way of identifying on that website when somebody logs in, okay, the meeting's been canceled or it's moved or something. Because right now, that's not, doesn't seem to be there.
And that calendar feature might come in. I noticed that I think one of the committees uses the calendar pretty good. Um, but maybe there's, maybe it's a combination of notifications and, and the calendar usage. But, uh, like I said, not, not urgent, but I can certainly follow up, um, uh, when Brandon's back.
Okay. And future agenda items? Anybody have anything they want on the, uh, right now, future agenda? We just moved the, uh, I think Brandon knows that, this, uh, second reading is continued.
You got, you got ARPA funds down for the, for the future, again?
Yes.
Um, I'd like, I know we, I know we saw that list of what Brandon had and, and the associated cost with that. But I'd like to remind everybody that, that, that whole source of funding came about, um, even the title of it says American Rescue Plan Act. So, I, I don't know whether you have yet or not yet, Brandon, but if you met with the, and this is just a generic question, have you met with the department heads? I know with the capital equipment purchase plan schedule or whatever, haven't seen that in years.
Yeah.
But I just, I'm curious to know whether or not something is, it's going to come up in, in a budget process. And then we will wish that we somehow use some ARPA funds because we knew it was going to come up. And then we didn't. And it's going to result in a tax increase that we don't, we're not going to be prepared for. So, all I know is that the American Rescue Plan funds were designated to be used for things that, to catch up on some things that you were going to spend on. It was not necessarily for brand-new ideas-
Correct.
That, that surfaced out of the thin air.
And, and so far, we've actually done very well with that.
Yeah.
And, and better than most towns, because most towns are broke on it already.
I know, but if he's starting to establish something that's coming up and that we know about now, I, I guess I just don't feel comfortable with spending something on. So, so the things, I asked you this question. If you had, if you, if you had the chance right now to, when you spent the money on something, was it, A, something you were going to do in the very, very near future? Or should have done in the last couple of COVID years? Or was it worth it? Would you do it again? And, you know, we, you and I talked about the generator here at Martin Hall. And there's no way that I would be on board to think that it would cost $40,000 for this building to have a generator system set up. Because I view this building not unlike a home. You know, the square footage, the use, whatever. And I've talked to contractors who have buildings this size, and it's not costing $40,000 to have a, a generator, a temporary generator. Because that's the whole key here, to get back onto the grid. So that, that's, I think that's a really valid question now, moving forward, to use up the rest of the $300,000 for ARPA funds. So, well, let's, let's see what happens. But I, but I know the time is ticking because we have like, we need to start doing that because like we've got one more year and they need to be on target to be spent.
Okay, but-
You got it on the agenda to talk about the next meeting.
It's on the agenda for the next, for, for the future.
Yes. Oh, not next meeting?
Well, it's future agenda item. Um, I, I think in the interest of time, we took that off this agenda, if, if I recall.
Do we have an ARPA wishlist?
That, that's what that is. That's what Dave is talking about. That is the ARPA wishlist. And it's been prioritized by the town manager.
Maybe we need to update our priorities.
Well, and that's exactly what you're supposed to do.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point of that, is to go through it and see how it rates for you. And Dave solved part of that problem because I think that probably the most important thing that was on there is the drainage at Memorial.
Yes, and we don't have that control.
We're already working on that, so. So that's already been kind of handled.
Yeah.
But let's, let's save the discussion on ARPA for, for the next meeting.
They've got a new name out of that.
Uh, no, Mike Fuller. Dave and I are related. Did you see that?
Yes. No, he's calling me.
Brandon, uh, who are you calling, me or Dave? Me or the other Mike?
Uh, you, oh, yeah, that's, that's sure, Mike Fuller, Mike Todd, David Todd. Um, hey, I did get my town manager update in full. And I do just have a couple of quick updates that I think are important enough to mention right now. Is that okay?
I already have a motion to adjourn. Go, go ahead, go ahead. I'm just kidding.
Um, just, so, so just real quick, um, there is an RFP out for plowing for the 2023, 2024 plowing season. Um, so that RFP is posted on our website under purchasing and bids. Uh, those bids will be due and reviewed by the board, um, at the second meeting in November. Um, also, we did post the highway department position. Um, and we've received three applications so far. Um, HR is currently working on setting up interviews with them to fill that position. Um, so those are the two main updates I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on. Um, we've also distributed FY25 budget templates. Today, I started setting up meetings to discuss the FY25 budgets, and it's on your way.
Thank you.
I anticipate, um, coming before the board, starting with the highway department budget, um, actually in the next meeting. So, um, we are preparing to move forward. And it feels crazy that we're already back in budget season. Um, it's already been a year, and-
As you get older, it will seem faster. Um, on the, on the-
It feels like we were just here having a discussion. Um, so it's, you know, it really, it's really been quite fast this year.
On, on the highway position, when do you expect to be hiring that, that individual?
As soon as possible. And, um, you know, back to what August had mentioned earlier, are we going to have any staffing changes? This is the one, um, staffing change we'll have. But we have one person exiting and one person coming on. Um, so I don't think it'll be too big of an impact on healthcare.
Not, not, not where I was going. I want to, I want to get the, well, the, the one place it, it, it would be in healthcare is the opt-out decision we were talking about earlier. We need to get that policy change done.
Okay.
Right?
Um, yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that on the next agenda. Um, and the board can just do that in motion, um, if you would like to do it.
Well, it's not a matter of, it's, it, it's actually a policy change. So it may require three meetings, three readings. That may not be a quick, something that's quick, Brandon. Is, if, that's a policy change, isn't it?
It's located in the personnel policy.
It, it is located in the personnel policies.
So doesn't that come under the three readings rule?
Yeah, I think so.
If, if we would like to go through, through the three readings, we can. Um, there are other areas in the personnel policy, um, that could be adjusted as well. Um, so we can do that, but if you're very, very low, any future also, take your place.
But, but we have, but we haven't, but, but we really haven't even had as a board a discussion about the opt-out program and whether to keep it or not to keep it. So I, I don't know if I want to rush into a motion right, right now. Um, I mean, I know how I feel about it, but that doesn't mean anything. That's one, that's one person. Um, but I think everybody should be up to speed on that before we, we, we start headed down that road. Um, so, I'm trying to figure out, I, I think when you discuss this with this individual, or, or if you guys have to move forward of hiring him, you've got to have him on board. You've got to get him in here. You might want to let him know, I don't know. I mean, you got to bring it up because it's in policy. But you got to tell him that this may be headed for a policy change that, that does not cover new hires. I, I don't know how you can do that within the law. And, do, any, any ideas?
I don't think you can.
I don't think you can.
Let me do it. Yeah, let me do a little bit of research on that. I, I tend to agree with David's belly.
Okay. And, well, and me, so, I think, because I think we're all on the same page here.
So where, what is the, where did you say the RFP is posted on the town website for plowing? Can you define that? What is it, Martin Hall? Is it, what, what are you doing?
Yes, um, so, the same thing we did last year with contracted plowing, 1879 schoolhouse, library, more and more at Hall, I think there's a couple other sites up here that we anticipate contracting out. Um, we do have, you know, a position that we need to fill, that may be training. Um, we don't know what we're currently aiming for, so, um, we do have a couple of people out right now. Um, when residing on leave, um, so we just want to be sure that we have plowing covered for the 2023, 2024 plowing season.
Yeah.
You have that RFP on the website right now?
Yes.
I'm, I'm asking for other people in Sapa, in Sapa world. So when is the deadline for a decision on that? So when is the deadline for a decision on that? I'm just doing this for a public announcement, we're on, our board meeting's on TV, so those contractors that may be interested in providing, I don't know the scope of what you're talking about, whether you're talking about plowing and sanding or what you're doing, for Martin Hall, the library, the eighteen-seventy-nine school yard, or it.
Would probably be the same meeting now, so.
I don't, no, I don't think so.
No?
But I, this is first I knew that he was putting an RFP out, so when is the deadline for responding?
The deadline is November fifteenth, and it'll come before the board at the second meeting in November, which off the top of my head, I think is November twentieth.
Yeah.
That second Friday.
Bless you.
At that second meeting in, in November.
That would be the twentieth.
We're doing those bids. Yeah, okay. So, in bids, um, to be delivered to, uh, either CO Box five fifty, or Scotty's Block, or our end delivery for the office, um, we will hold a public bid opening on November fifteenth at one PM, where bids will be read aloud, um, and then logged in by the town department, and we'll send the bids then, we'll do an analysis, we'll send it to the board, and then we'll redo it and determine if you wanna move forward to contracted plowing services.
Okay, so, so I've, I've got questions already, so August gave me his, his, so I'm reading the description of this, this is more than what we've done. So, um, can persons bid on this as individuals, or is it all or nothing?
Yes, so if, you know, I would recommend that if somebody, if anyone wants to do Martin Mall, or only wants to do the library to put a bid in, um, obviously, the lower bidder is, you know, generally what we move forward with, um, but I guess one bidder comes in, makes you do them all, and then while it's bid, then, um, I would recommend going with that company because they can hit the library, hit Martin Mall, all in the same line, um.
So where?
You can absolutely put it.
So you went over this with Ray, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so where is the money coming from for this? And do you have any prior years to compare with the cost? Cause I, I, this is, I think for me, that's expanded, I mean, we have this Cutney Store Road, that was not done, now we have the entire transfer station being plowed and sanded. That's kind of a big deal, and it could end up being, so the transfer station then would have to be billed to the transfer station budget, cause it's not part of the highway or the general fund, and it'd be a fee-based thing, uh, that could be easily several or more thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
And we wanna be prepared in case we cannot, we have two men currently out of the highway department, so there would be a, there would be an offsetting of cost there with no employee and an increase in contracted services. Um, we have to be prepared in the case, you know, I have enough people in the plowing department, like I said, we have two people out.
But Dave, but Dave, to, wait, wait, Dave, to your, to your question on, uh, the solid waste, I think we pay the highway department to do it anyway. So it's just a matter of what contracted service we're paying.
Gotcha.
For that.
Okay.
Exactly, so, and, and indeed, we may hire somebody by the time.
Yep.
It's finished.
Well, but, so if that, so.
The plowing services would change.
Okay, so, and that's kinda why I asked whether you offered these on the town, whatever the bid sheet is, separately.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, I've been asked in the past, you know, about opportunity, about different things, and this is an opportunity for, went to work for contractors. I mean, a lot of guys don't dig, and they also have one tons in plowing, and they, they wanted a chance, and that's all they're asking. Um, no, I understand, I just, you know, we all need to keep our eyes on the ball about money, where it's coming from, what, and what's going on. This is pretty specific, I mean, it says plowing and sanding and keep safe, and I mean, okay, so that's, that's pretty liberal for, for the person plowing, and they can submit bills as they see fit.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay?
Good.
Um, and, yeah, all right.
It's okay.
Yep.
I'm okay.
We're good. Anything else, Brandon?
All right. Uh, nope, that, that's everything I had.
Okay. You, uh, you be safe, enjoy your vacation out there. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm open.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Okay, Brandon, we're off the clock.